Good evening, welcome to the Schenandoah State of Education Regular Meeting, January 20th, 2022. Erin, will you please conduct roll call?
Amy O'Brien.
Here.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Here.
Here.
Ben Lockwood is absent.
And Christina.
Here.
We have a call. I call the meeting to order. Will you please, please stand for the pledge.
With allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
No one who signed up for public comment? Point one, Superintendent.
Thank you, Amy. So we have a few things to report on this month. A lot of good things. First thing that I have for you is we have Mr., I want to introduce Mr. Tronavich to come up and talk to us about some of the new courses that we would like to offer at the high school.
All right. I sound nervous because I am. So we'll get through this stuff. Um, I want to thank obviously Board of Education for having me up here and Superintendent Burkhardt for letting me share these great courses. They're hoping to be able to have our students next year that will provide great opportunities for them and supporting them on hopefully their career pathways as well. Also want to say thank you to some of the teachers that are preparing these courses over the last year or two, actually. Um, I'm giving you a snapshot, but there's been a lot of work behind the scenes that have led us to this point. So I'd like to thank Andrea Gumbel, Brandon Youngs, Axie Roma, Key Roscoe, Lindsay Doolittle, and Ken Starr. Obviously, a lot of hard work has been going into this, so. So we'll get started here. Just a bit of a preface, just kind of give you an idea of a rationale as to why we are presenting these courses to you. Recognizing student passions and creating ways for them to get exposure to career field for post-secondary success is a huge priority, obviously, at the high school. And we want to continue to operate or give those opportunities to students. We're always looking for ways to prepare students for life after school, and these courses, we feel, do just that. So I'll give you a list of the courses by department. So for the art department, we have art exploration. For the music department, we have audio engineering. For the English department, science fiction and fantasy, as well as you'll notice the EDUs next to these are actually college credit bearing courses. Foundations of American education through SUNY Broom, and then So You Want to Be an Educator through Binghamton University. Okay, what we'll do is I'll break these down each one to give you more info on them. So the first one being art exploration. All right, that's highlighted. I'll read that to you in a moment. But this one has to do again with career pathways, right? I'm going to touch on some of the important words that I see up here. Through art. So some of the areas of focus are media production, which with that being anything you see in marketing, right, or advertising, print, online, or TV, you got tattoo artistry. So I think of the show Ink, if you've ever seen that before, I see it's it's art, obviously, but the canvas is a is a human being, right? And it's incredible. Next is glass working, and I think about Corning Museum, right? Not too far down the road and the opportunities that we could hopefully pair with when it comes to that. Art therapy, which is blossoming field right now, especially due to social emotional needs of our society, right, through this pandemic. As well as forensic artistry, special effects, and beauty. Some of the keywords I want to touch on though is networking. That's going to be a focus for this area, is trying to network with the community members that are already a part of these fields, which I think will be incredible for our students to have that opportunity, as well as cross-curricular. There's going to be opportunities to pair up with other content areas as well, which is going to be great. And then the real-life connections that we're trying to build here in the high school that I got to prepare our students for post-secondary work. So highlighted there, which you cannot see thanks to the yellow, is that we're actually going to open that up ninth through 12th grade. However, when it comes to the career explorations, we're probably not going to see as many ninth graders, especially with the way that their schedules fill up and we try to get some of those early electives out of the way, and especially with the core classes. So probably more upperclassmen, but we definitely don't want to limit it at that point if there is some some wiggle room for current underclassmen. Okay? Any questions about x art exploration at this point?
Is studio art going to be a prerequisite for that, or?
So at this point, there wasn't going to be a prerequisite at all.
Right? So that's truly open all year long for an eighth grader. That's great.
And that's, yeah, so we're excited about that. Yeah, awesome. So move on to the next one. The next one is audio engineering. So for this, this is going to be through our music department. With that being said, I don't know how many of you know this, some of you do, right? But at least a quarter of our student population in the high school is in some form of music, right? Whether it's band or chorus. So to me, I mean, that's a testament, obviously, to the music department and everything that they do from K through and to get these students and continue to keep them interested in this area. So being able to offer them this opportunity to see what else is out there outside of the dream of being, you know, a rock musician or a big-time singer, showing them that there's other career pathways when it comes to music and using their passion for something in that area, I think is huge in this regard. So there's a lot of technical words here, so I'm hoping you're not going to ask me to define them. But the four stages of professional music recording will be part of the projects that they're going to be doing, like recording, editing, mixing, and mastering, utilizing Audacity and GarageBand. I think I've heard of GarageBand. I'm pretty sure that's an app that they can use to help create music. And open source recording and mixing software. Again, just focusing on some key statements here when it comes to what we can provide for the students, hands-on projects to learn the fundamental concepts of audio engineering. So I think that's the key, is that it's going to be hands-on, it's going to be just more exploratory, and also again, showing students what options are there for them after high school, which I think is obviously paramount for what we're trying to do. So, and again, highlighted, but that's going to be a ninth through 12th. At this point, again, there'll probably be more geared towards some upperclassmen, but at the same time, still available if there's if there's room in student schedules. Okay? Any questions about that? Uh, so this one is going to be an elective through our English department. So this is going to be science fiction and fantasy, which is actually each year becoming more and more popular and more in demand. The key with this one is that we have avid readers, and we're fortunate to have those in our high school. And this is a great way for them to explore these books and genres that they already love, right? But now with the guidance of one of our instructors, our teachers, but also to try to hook more students into these genres that are already pulled towards maybe even just the movies that were created on. So some features associated with these genres, they range from dystopia, artificial intelligence, and hard science to the Gothic tale, the hero's journey, and the creatures of high fantasy. A lot of times, and I know many of you have children that are going through here, or you know, have in the past, right? You think about titles like Harry Potter, Hunger Games, The Chronicles of Narnia, The Hobbit, Lord of the Rings, things that are just everywhere in our society and don't seem to ever go away. But you can even put in like things like Star Wars, which has made a resurgence in the last decade, right? All of these things fall under these genres that are hugely popular right now. And again, being able to have students in these courses and and focus on those passions that they already have, I think is huge as well. So again, a ninth through 12th grade, typically, again, I'm sounding like a broken record, probably more upperclassmen, though. Okay? Questions about this? Okay, all right, moving on. All right, so this brings us to our college credit bearing courses. What this is, is these are, the next two that I'm going to talk about are paired together. They're going to be two half-year electives, but they're going to be taken in tandem in terms of you take one in the fall, one in the spring, and that is the expectation for our students. This came about through the Southern Tier Teaching Academy. It's an initiative, obviously, around here through our higher institutions of Broom and Binghamton University that we've been having these ongoing conversations with them in terms of how can we create a pipeline for educators or people that are interested in the area of education, right? And create these pathways for these careers. So for this one in particular, this is going to be through BCC, right, called the Foundation of American Education. They're going to cover the topics listed up here historically, right, because of the foundations aspect, but also contemporary, right? What's happening now with these topics as well in our current state and our education system? One of the best parts about this one is that this will get students an opportunity to do 30 observation hours, which means students are going to be going into classrooms and and depending on comfort level, some of the instructors doing some more hands-on work, but at least observing what we're actually being taught in the classroom, right? And and seeing what it actually looks like in our education system, not just here at Schenandoah. So how it's set up, though, is that high school and elementary, they'd spend time here on our campus doing some of their hours. But at the middle school, we're just going to work with some of the cooperating districts that are also a part of this, which is Binghamton, Maynunville, and Windsor. And so that we're going to work on a rotational system so that our students will be able to get out and see what other school districts are like. Obviously, each school district, they have their pros and cons, right? And I think it's important for them to see what's outside of our awesome bubble that we have here at Schenandoah. And see those lesser schools. No, I'm just kidding. See those other schools. That's good. That's good. The other part is that it works on college preparedness. There's actual campus tours of at least two college campuses that they'll be doing and meeting with some people on campus as well. Again, they're going to earn some high school credit and then three college credits upon completion or successful completion. Okay, so this will be the spring course. Now, for the fall course, you've got So You Want to Be an Educator. This is going to be the one through Binghamton University. This is a little bit more project-based, but what I love about this one is it looks at education holistically. A lot of times you talk about education, everyone just thinks of teacher, right? But this is a course that's going to focus on most if not all facets of education. And listed up there, right, is a teacher, counselor, administrator, related services like OTPT, psychologist, social worker, as well as professors. That's the best part, is it opens up their their point of view, not just from the teacher's side, but also if you're still interested in education, you don't necessarily have to be in the classroom. There's other areas that you could pursue, which I think is also great. So again, this is going to be for high school and college credits. So lastly, I don't know if I mentioned this, but this Southern Tier Teaching Academy is for seniors only. Okay, that's the one we have put a limit on.
And this is the first time we've ever been able to directly offer a course for Binghamton University, correct?
I believe so. Yeah, I believe so. So it's, I think, it's like I said, an incredible opportunity. We've got some some students already kind of really chomping at the bit to kick it in. So we're excited about this one. Okay, any questions about the Southern Tier Teacher Academy or in general? All right, I appreciate your time. Thank you very much.
Good job.
Thanks, Tronavich. Thanks, Jeff.
Are you going to follow all that excitement? With some equally exciting COVID updates, so.
Okay, so just wanted to put some things in graphics for you as we go through a COVID update. This is, I apologize if there's any typos or anything that doesn't look aesthetically pleasing, because this is literally hot off the presses. We had our COVID update meeting this morning, so there's a lot of new information that we're able to put on here that it will be rolling out to parents in the near future. So just a quick update on where we're at as far as COVID positive cases and cases that we're seeing through throughout the district. We have, this is since we came back from break, where I figured to give you an update, as I've been giving the board updates weekly. But we have seen in our elementary 56 positive student cases, 42 middle school. In the high school, we had 29 students positive since we came back from break. Total number of students in the building, that's just, you know, our enrollment right now. So just to kind of give you an idea ratio for our students. And then staff positive cases, this is only in the building. I put, I meant to put a little asterisk there. Our district-wide employees, such as our maintenance and custodial workers and related workers that aren't directly employed by the district, like our bus drivers, we excluded them from there, but these are the students, these are the staff that are working directly with students in our buildings. We had a total of 32. So just to give you an idea of what we're seeing as far as cases since we came back from break. We were expecting a little bit of an uptick because of the Omicron variant, and we kind of saw that, so. As we went through, as we go through, we've had some reason, we've had some shifts in our COVID-19 protocols. I think some of the families might be sick of getting letters from me about every week, but that's kind of in tune with what we've been seeing with the with the Broom County Health Department and the New York State of Education Health Department. So we've been, you know, as timely as I can and as reasonable as I can, I've been trying to get those updates out to staff. And as soon as, when we change protocols and the systems that we're we're enacting in the buildings, we're, you know, we're trying to get that information out to families and to our staff and students. So on, some of the things that we've been seeing most recently since we came back from break is there's a lot of research has come back on the variants and how they behave with the Delta variant and then now with the Omicron variant. Also, there's, you know, I should have put in there too, how people are reacting to the vaccine and how that how that's changed our positive cases. So we've also seen changes in rate of hospitalization that was reported today. So last year, kind of a bit of good news in a in a degree is, you know, still a serious disease that we're concerned about, but last year around this time, there's 86 COVID-related deaths in Broom County. This year, so far through January, we're about a little bit more than halfway through, three-quarters the way through January, we've we've had 13. So they are seeing improvement. They're also seeing about a 39% drop in positive cases over the last few, over the last week. So that's very positive. That's New York statewide, and what they've kind of explained to us through the Broom County COVID group is that through Dr. Ryan and the Broom County Health Department, is that that's statewide and then and mostly concentrated, obviously, in New York City. And then as you go, as you go more rural, they, we lag a little bit behind in those trends, but we usually follow those trends, but we're about two weeks behind. So we are starting to see that trend happening here in Broom County. They kind of reported that they're still concerned about hospitalization rates, but they are seeing a plateau and start to drop in those in our positive cases, which is encouraging. So and then I put in here just as something that we've learned in education, but also I think it's really understood really well, which I commend the Broom County Health Department and your state health department, too. The focus of you, if you watch the news from the federal government through the state health education department, through our, even our local Broom County Health Department, is they understand now, going through this whole pandemic, the importance of the social emotional wellness of kids being in school every day. So their focus is as much as possible, as much as we can maintain a safe environment for them, we want them to be in school because we realize the the importance of that. So as we go through, this is, again, this is, I kind of put a little asterisk there. This is all based on direction and guidance from the New York State Broom County Health Department. And coming in as a superintendent, but working with this as a principal for for the last few years, my experience has been, it's it's been a little frustrating, but it's also, we understand the changes in the immediacy of keeping people safe, but also keeping kids educated, right? So one of the most positive trends that I've experienced is after becoming a superintendent and being part of that Broom County COVID community that meets every week is that we've been really, there's been really a push to align the entire county together and make decisions as a county. And I really appreciate the camaraderie and the team synergy that we've been able to put together with the health department and the other area superintendents. And I think that's kind of helped some of these change changes, I think, come along as we as we work through this. So this is just kind of a quick history, not the relive all of my long letters that I've sent home to families, but just to take you through because of those changes that we saw in the last slide. January 4, with the schools implemented test to stay as an option to keep students in school. And then January 10, we had the schools implemented the Broom County Department of Health guidelines for reduced isolation times. So we went from 10 to five days. And then more recently, January 14, the Broom County Department of Health informed us that through the through the state, they would no longer be issuing quarantine orders, so for close contacts of school positive cases. So kind of, we've kind of take all that information in, we kind of have to decipher that and figure out what does that mean, right? So going through, as of, this is the new information, so I I kind of prefaced with my board, there's going to be some surprises that are hot off the cross. As of today, since the Broom County Health Department is not issuing quarantine orders and contact tracing, they're, you know, they have worked with us to put in a better, kind of a more aligned path with them for handling cases in in classes and also to try to keep students safe. So as of January 20th, which is today, schools will no longer contact trace for positive students or staff. So Schenandoah Forbes, we will notify if anybody has been exposed, if there's a potential danger to students, obviously, that's it's, you know, it's in our best interest to do that. So, you know, that's what you talk about that. A lot of, that's a lot of language that, you know, I think a lot of parents are thinking they're had, well, what does that mean? And a lot of staff thinks in their head, what does that mean? So what's going to stay the same is if for students that are symptomatic or they have COVID positive, really nothing's going to change. If they're symptomatic, you know, as Dr. Ryan said in our Broom County, our last briefing from the Broom County Department of Health, said, you know, we were trying to move from the mentality of going from a pandemic mindset to an endemic mindset. As, you know, that's where we're hopeful we'll get to. We're, we're seeing that trend come through like New York City and some of the other areas around the world. And we're hoping that we're starting to see that trend go this way as well. So we're, we're preparing for that. So part of what what his mindset was, another nice thing that he said that I really enjoyed was, he said, you know, when you're sick, stay home, and when you feel better, you know, come back to school and work. That's what we're trying to get back to. So and there, you know, we we kind of put a layer of, you know, and here's a, here's a COVID test, you know, take a home COVID test that you can take just to make sure that you're safe and you're not going to get anybody else sick. So really, for schools, for schools, if you're symptomatic, we're going to send students home until they feel better. They take a COVID test and it's negative, they can come back to school as soon as their symptoms are better. If they're positive, they would wait that five days and then come back to school. So that's, that's basically what that says there. So the big thing is what is different? So families will be informed more like if there was a, you know, if there was an outbreak of measles or mumps or strep throat in a classroom. In the elementary, that'll look very similar. We've sent home a letter or sent out a notice to or an email, I think we decided to do, which is we're trying to get with the times, right, Mrs. Owen? So we'll send out an email to families, let them know that there was an exposure in the classroom and give them signs and things to look out for and also provide resources. We have, we have take-home tests that we can provide to families if they need them, if a child's symptomatic. We also have resources as far as contacting, but also, you know, obviously, if students are sick, we want them to contact their primary physician as well. So that's, that's part of that resource. Students, otherwise, when, if there's a positive case in a classroom, we wouldn't norm, we would, in a normal situation, we wouldn't then exclude them from school because we would be contact tracing. So it'd be more up to the parents or the the school nurse recognizing symptoms with a student or a student, you know, expressing that they're not feeling well. If if schools did be, I will put this in here because this is listed in the guidance of school, schools did become aware of a close contact. And we may still, just want to put that in, we may still, in certain situations, have to exclude, you know, students because of that, we're that we're aware of that close contact and to be safe, and if they're unvaccinated, we would then still go with that five-day, and then they would still, they would fall under that, there's still that layer of that test to stay piece would still be in place, and they could have still opt the test to stay and come back to school. So that, I believe, is everything. I usually put a slide for questions. I didn't put, it was so hot off the press, I didn't get a chance to put a slide for questions. But any questions? Since I know this is a lot of new information and a lot to take in, I didn't know if there was anything from the board that went through. We were kind, I was sending notes to the board, so I was kind of preparing them for this. So I I think that you were, you know, kind of saw it coming, but this is, you know, I know there's, the devil is always in the details, as I say, so we wanted to make sure that I went through the details with you and understood what where we're at at this point, so.
Tom, did they give any clarification? I don't know if Dave knows this either. I saw in the previous guidelines about sports and fully vaccinated definition and all that.
Yes.
And if they weren't boosted, that they could come to school but can't play.
Yes, that's, and that's been a concern for us, too. There's a, there's, the Broom County Health Department, I will say, is in alignment with the superintendents who have suggested that the superintendent decides what constitutes a school day. So and what they are, if in that case, they would be part of a test to stay program. So our our thought is that if they test to stay and they come and they're okay to come to school, they should stay through all their, they should be able to stay through all their events. So I think the bit, the best, the best example I can give is the kid that comes to school in the morning, has band at third period and goes to band practice with all of his friends but can't play in the concert at night, right? So that's, that's, I, that's a great example. So we are, so we have put that out. However, the state department has ruled specifically on what their definition of what a school day is, which is that confined, normal school day. And until they get, until we get some relief, we put in a request to give us some relief on that, on that issuance, that we would be able to kind of roll that, put that into. So as of right now, to answer your question simply, is they would be excluded in that type of situation, but we would, but we're working on trying to get that changed. And the Broom County Health Department is is in the, in our corner, so to speak, so.
Are boards writing letters to those stated on the defense or not?
Yes, well, they're actually out, one step further, our district superintendent is meeting with the other district superintendents with the doctor for the state health department on Monday. So and we've actually put together guidance that was from our last superintendent's meeting of questions and requests for them, so. Yeah. So there you go. All right. Any other questions? All right, thank you. That's all I have on COVID. I think we're ready to be done talking about it, so. And I will be sending out, I should say, too, I'm sending out updates to parents tomorrow on that. And staff will get, be getting a copy of this presentation as well, so we can walk through that. So I did meet with the nurses today and our principals, so they're up to date on that. So we have that piece. And next up, we have something that's going to be coming up on our agenda a little bit later. We're going to be approving, we're going to have some special improvements, approvals for some very special workers. And kind of speaking a little bit to what Mr. Tronavich had mentioned before at the high school, we're trying to implement some work-based learning opportunities for students and get some learning opportunities in place for students that are directly related to sequences or career pathways. So in that vein, getting them ready for work after high school, we've implemented a new program with student helpers. And it's, we're in phase one right now, and we plan to expand that. We're already in discussions. Mrs. Porby is already in discussions with our IT Services Department to get ready for phase two with with a youth apprenticeship program. But I'm going to let Mrs. Porby kind of took this on. I gave her an idea and she kind of grabbed it and ran with it. So she's, and she implemented it and gave a great experience for our students. So I just wanted to have her go through that the program, give an overview of the program, and just talk about what the students have experienced so far, which I think you'll agree is a very valuable learning opportunity just about work and going into the workforce in general. So Mrs. Porby?
Thank you, Mr. Burkhardt. So probably day two, when Mr. Burkhardt took over, he he had mentioned to me that it's former district. They had something called student helpers. Would it be something that we could implement here at Schenandoah Forbes? So yes, we decided we could implement it. And basically, what we did is we identified our first area is is our facilities, cleaning our facilities. We felt that that would be something that we could start, and like Tom had mentioned, phase one. So we had a small committee together, Mr. Tronavich said on the committee, myself, Miss, Mrs. Q and Mr. Solanek, to kind of hash out what it would look like. Then Mr. Tronavich emailed families of juniors and seniors to let them know that we're going to have this opportunity to come see the guidance office if they were interested. We had seven students apply for the position. What we did was is we looked at their applications, any that weren't complete, Miss Q used as a teaching opportunity to pull the kids aside and say, hey, buddy, you got to fill this out. This is an application, so to speak. We also had them fill out the STEAM Academy application, too, because it can, they can also have the potential to earn work-based learning credit for those students that would like to do that as well. So they filled out both both applications. Then we set up interviews. We did a team interview with the four people I had mentioned, and we interviewed each of the students. We also, when we were interviewing them, we had conversations with them about their grades, about their attendance. There are any discipline referrals, but that did not sway us at all, meaning just basically saying that you're a student first. You know, we'd love to provide you with this opportunity, but you got to be a student first, if that makes sense. So after the interview process, we offered six out of seven the positions. Actually, we offered all seven, but one student found a better job ever, I think. So we didn't accept the position. So we were able to accommodate all of the students that applied. Um, so we didn't accept the position. So we were able to accommodate all of the students that applied. Um, what we're looking at is, is having the student helpers like Tom mentioned in each of our three buildings. Um, they're going to do a rotating basis, um, they're going to do it right after school, um, so that all they would need is a ride home. They're already here. Um, we're looking at having them work between three and five to start cleaning common areas. Hallways, stairwells, um, you know, doing some garbage, things like that to start. We did let our student helpers know there is a potential, right? There is. A potential for you to possibly catch a weekend shift, if like we have like a wrestling tournament or something, as well as summer work. Um, because you will be, you can be, you know, civil service, you could be, you know, um, so we explained that to them. This week, um, pending your, your approval of the student helpers, we are having training with them. We're doing like an official training. Um, very similar to what we do for new employees, um, where they're going to come in. Mrs. Star is going to help them fill out their paperwork, all of their, their I nine, all the, all those sorts of paperwork. And we're going to take their picture, they're going to get a badge. Um, and then we're going to do some. Other required trainings and then Mr. Solanek is going to provide them with like, this is how you punch in on the time clock. Um, those sorts of things. And then the official, um, rotation schedule starts next Monday, the thirty first. Um, like Tom had mentioned, so that's the first phase. Um, Mr. Hibbert had mentioned that there is a student that he, that's interested in doing something. Under him in the transportation department. Um, so we're going to be interviewing that student, um, for that because there's a need there. And like Tom had mentioned, um, the IT, um, there are students in the district that are really interested in, in, in IT, like, um. For example, if a teacher calls and has a bulb out and there's a student working, they could go replace that bulb, right? Um, so that'll be the next expansion that we look to do through the youth apprenticeship program. Um, so it's, we will provide you with updates. It's something we're very excited about. Um, the students seem very excited. Um, to be able to provide the opportunity pending your approval later in the agenda, so.
Very good.
Sounds great.
Yeah. I had to say too, the very impressive, I didn't get to sit in on the interviews, but the kids were very, the full interview process, that Lori did a great job of. You know, getting them set with a real interview committee. They went through actual questions, the kids prepared very well. I saw a few of them even dressed up really nice, right, for the. For their interview that day. So, um, it was a great, I think it's like, we're providing a valuable experience, even in just that. Piece of the, of the work-based learning opportunity. So that was great, so.
Just the interview experience alone.
Yeah, that was nice. I mean, we asked them some good questions, right? And like I said, the big thing is, is we, we. We did review, like we went over the grades, why, why are you failing us? You know, like what's your plan? Like some students are have to go to remedial before they attend work. You know, so kind of just tell them that, yeah, we, we support you, but we're going to hold you accountable as well, so.
So you said they're going to start up like two hours at first?
Yeah, it's like a three to five, like.
Since they're like school, is it early, is there like a minimum for like a shift that they have to do, since it's school kind of related?
There isn't, but there's like a certain amount, they can work till ten o'clock.
Okay.
Um, and there's certain jobs that they can do and they can't do. We just started, we obviously want, don't want them in confidential areas, right? Things like that, but there are needs and that was, you know, they can do the garbage, they can do, like they, like I said, a weekend, maybe if, if they want to catch a couple hours. If we've got something going on, um, in the nicer weather, they might work outside, um. And we've got them, like everybody, we're like working opposite. Does that make sense? So like, there's going to be somebody on every night in each of our three buildings. Um, and that's where we're going to start and then we'll just keep you posted, um.
And we have historically hired students for the summer work piece, right, for the out, outdoor kind of.
Long time ago, I can't, I don't know, but I know years ago we used to do that, right? We used to hire them for mowing the lawn.
That was kind of the opportunity Lori was speaking to as a possibility, uh, they would kind of have first. First, if they work out, they would kind of have first digits of some of those. And I, my understanding is my experience in schools is those are really. Highly, highly toted, great jobs for, for kids to be, because they're outdoors and they get to do, you know, they get to work outdoors with the school equipment and. They're, they're really helpful to us. And I did want to say too, I know that, uh, John, uh, assistant, uh. John Solanek was saying he's very, uh, appreciative for the extra help too, as you know, we have some shortages and. And, uh, our employees, so to, just to have somebody, even if they're going around and just, you know, working on common areas, sweeping the hallways, getting the stairwells. You know, emptying garbage, is that really frees up our, our cleaners and our other custodians to do, you know, meaningful deeper cleanings in the classroom. So I think, uh, district-wide, it's going to be quite a benefit. All right. Anything else for Lori or Mrs. Porby, excuse me? All right, well, perfect timing.
Ran right in. Forgot my mask. Find me a mask, so I apologize. I was.
You've got your social distancing, you're, you're in good shape. Can I get you a?
Sorry.
No, that's okay.
I'm like, I'm looking around, I'm like, okay.
And I usually bring an extra, so.
Yeah, I, I usually have my coat.
They would say you've got at least ten feet space for everybody, so it was certainly not holding against you.
Yes, he promised me he'd get me one, so, sorry about that. But it is easier to talk without one, I have to say, every once in a while. You know, because I get so passionate about school finances that, you know.
So I should give a proper introduction for the people watching at home to this. Uh, I'd like to introduce Kathy Blackman. Uh, from our school, uh, business office, uh, with BOSI's and she's here to talk about our present bu- budget and fund balance and some future projections.
Okay, well, thank you. And I know many of you and so, um, I. Used to work at Schenandofer Forks, for those that don't know me, and, uh, I left in twenty thirteen. I've been at BOSI's for the last eight plus years. He's got my mask, thank you. But I feel like I'm really breaking the rules here, so, uh, thank you for that. So before I get into the long-range projection, since the state budget just came out, I, I, um, felt like I should give you just a little bit of a. An overview. It's really good news, uh, for the first time since in twenty-five years that I've been doing this. Um, it was an eighteen-minute governor's, uh, presentation, which was amazing. And then followed up by a Department of, uh, Budget, uh, presentation that really gave us a lot of the details and. Um, although your district is not, uh, going to receive, uh, you know, an influx of foundation aid and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. It is a little bit more than what you'll see in this presentation. And, um, it's a starting point for, you know, the talks with, with the legislature. So it's possible that you might get a little more than what, you know, they've outlined in this current proposal. Um, but not shooting at some of the expense-driven aids or consolidating aids or doing any of the things that we have traditionally seen. And as a BOSI's employee, they're always, you know, trying to reduce BOSI's costs and BOSI's aid and. And none of that is included this year. So I, I think that's really good news and, uh, your district's foundation aid is. You know, at a minimum three percent, which is about three hundred and ninety-five thousand additional funds and. You know, every little bit helps. And so I think that, uh, you know, we'll be hearing more in the next couple of months before the. April first deadline, but I think it's good news, so. All right, so tonight we're going to go over, uh, twenty-one, twenty-two projected operating performance and your long-range projection. And, um, I always like to start off with saying, and you got a little pointer here, so I'm going to put it down where I'm not using it. Um, I always like to start off, uh, with, you know, giving an overview of where we're at today. And, uh, this is what we use as the basis for our long-range projection. And, uh, so as you can see from the slide, uh, you know, we're at an operating surplus of. Of one point, just shy of one point six million dollars. So each month, um, we meet with Tom and Mark. And we go over, you know, all the different data points and, and revise that projection. So it's still. You know, somewhat on the early side, but it can be used as a guide to make, um, decisions on, you know, spending. From now until the end of the school year. So it will be revised, but, um. You know, this is where we're at at this point. And when we built this year's budget, the twenty-one, twenty-two budget. Um, we would have anticipated having an operating deficit of about eight hundred and eighty-seven thousand. That's because you appropriated fund balance each year, you use part of your savings to balance your budget. And you also appropriated some reserves for this year. And so, um, you know, so this is much better performance. Largely due to the federal stimulus funding and shifting some of the costs over, you know, over to those grants. But, um, still good news, you know, for the district. Then we have, um, this is just a snapshot of where we think fund balance is going to be as of the end of the year. And so these are the different categories, um, that we have. So, you know, the reserves. Um, and I'm not going to go into great detail on, on your reserves tonight, but, um. Those reserves are projected to increase about one point seven million. And so, you know, tentatively, we have a plan on, you know, what, what reserves we're going to fund. And that is, um, you may recall about four years ago, we established the TRS sub-fund. Um, which is, uh, we're eligible to fund two percent per year. So we're going to put about two hundred and two. Uh, thousand in there and the remainder can be used for, you know, any. One-time spending that you might have, or it can be, you know, put into the capital reserve, uh, for future capital projects. And so that's kind of where we have it as a placeholder, um, at this point. Um, appropriated fund balance, that's that budget balancing, uh, that we use, uh, is going to remain at five hundred thousand. And your encumbrances, which are the outstanding purchase orders at the end of the year. At the end of June, they were a hundred and seventy-two thousand. And the way we do our projections, we don't know what they're going to be, so we just work all of those. Incumbrances into the expenditure numbers. So you'll have outstanding encumbrances at the end of the year. But it could be fifty thousand or it could be four hundred thousand. So we just, we just assume that, um, that's just going to be what it is. And then your unassigned fund balance, we shoot to have you about at three point seven five. You're limited by statute to four percent. And this is really those funds that can be used for anything. They don't have any specific designated purpose. Whereas your restricted reserves, they are restricted for that purpose. They're either going to be used for ERS or TRS. Or, you know, whatever expense that they are, um, specified for your capital fund, that kind of thing. So your total fund balance, um, at the end of the year, which you received your audited financial statements in October. It was about one, uh, five point nine million and we're projecting it to be. About seven and a half million, an increase of that same amount of the operating surplus of about one point six million. So any questions on performance for this school year before I go into the long-range plan?
Okay, can you just explain to them why we shoot for the three and a half percent for the fund, fund balance?
Sure. So, um, you know, like I said, we're, we're limited to four percent by statute and, uh, you know. There have been some districts that exceed that, but, um, it is not a, something that we recommend. That you will fully exceed the, the unassigned fund balance percentage. And I know that, um, at least all the superintendents in our region. And, uh, um, across the state, uh, there has already been a couple of bills introduced to increase that unassigned fund balance. Because right now, we, you know, it's a good revenue, uh. You know, I'm happy to say that we have good revenue coming in where, uh, in previous years we may not have. And so if we were able to increase that unassigned fund balance to a higher percentage, say six or eight percent. That would allow the district to have, uh, you know, a larger cushion for those unanticipated expenses. Um, and you know, what I pointed to when I was going over it with one of the superintendents is, in the Department of Budget, um. Conversation, uh, the director said, we need to put away five billion dollars in New York State. About fifteen percent to weather those bad times. And so I said, why don't we point to him and say, why can't we put away, you know, uh, up to fifteen percent? Or maybe not that much, but a, a, a good amount for a budget your size. Uh, four percent is, is pretty low. So we won't exceed it by statute, but we're very hopeful that. Um, there might be some traction this year in increasing the unassigned fund balance. So if any of you. You know, participate in lobbying efforts, that's certainly, um, an area that I would recommend that. That we look into and I know NISBA and everybody's on board with trying to increase that. Any other?
We have one scheduled in February, so, for the superintendent, so.
Oh, yeah.
And that's one of our topics.
Yes.
Thanks.
Yeah, yeah. And I don't know who's attending on that. There's no breakfast, so I don't know if it's really allowed. If you, you know, there's, it's on Zoom and there's no breakfast, but, um, yeah, we, uh, we worked with the superintendent that, uh. Developed that proposal, so. Um, so getting into the long-range projection, um. So one of the assumptions that we used was that state you would receive a minimum increase. And so I hate to use the word overfunded. But if you look at Schenandofer Forks calculation of foundation aid, the formula itself yields a lower amount. Than what you're actually receiving. So I like to say that we, I don't like to say overfunded, but I like to say. We're getting more than, than, than the formula generates. Um, and so when we built this projection, we built in what we thought was a reasonable factor of two percent per year. We already know that we're going to at least get three percent, because I don't think the legislature is going to take. They always build off of the governor's proposal. So that's not factored in here and that is an additional amount of, you know, of a hundred thousand or so. Uh, more than, than what we've put into, to this coming school year. But when Mark, as Mark builds your actual budget for twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, he will use that foundation aid number that, uh, will come out of our, our office, so. Tax levy limit, um, we, uh, put it as it is estimated, which is two point three one percent. Do not remember that number yet. That is an estimate. Um, so when the governor's proposal comes out, uh, there's a lot of detail that comes behind it, which we don't have yet. And so as soon as we get that detail, um, it has some of the aid ratios that we need to use to actually calculate your tax levy limit. It will be somewhere around that range, um, but it might, you know, differ by a couple of tons of, of a percent. And so I think I'm slotted to come in February and go over the tax levy limit calculation. And at that point, we'll have what, what the firm number, um, should be. But for twenty twenty, uh, twenty-two, twenty-three and, and onward, uh, we're projecting. Um, your tax levy limit at, uh, what it is actually calculated at. And I'll talk in a few minutes on why I think it's important for you to, um, kind of take that formula and go with it. Uh, given your situation. On the expenditure side, um, we have, uh, the current staff of record. Including any open positions. So basically whoever's in the budget this year. Um, and any open positions are, um, that are unfilled right now. Um, are what we used as the basis for this, uh, this projection. And, uh, you may recall that when you look at, uh, staffing, that's a pretty high percentage. We're people business. And so it's important for us to capture, uh, those. And as we look at the, the projection in another slide. Um, I'll explain how we phased in those, uh, stimulus positions back into the budget. Health insurance, unfortunately, you have experienced some negative, uh, performance in the health plan. And so it's estimated to be eleven percent in twenty-two, twenty-three. Um, those rates have, uh, just been announced by the consortium and so, um. I think it's going to be right in that range. And then we're hoping, uh, for a taper off of that higher rate. Um, you are nearer at the maximum modifier at this point, uh, due to, uh, you know, at least one large claim that you have. And twenty-twenty, and there's too many twos going on. In twenty-two, twenty-three, the teacher's retirement system is projected to modestly increase. Um, and then we flat, we left it flat after that and the employee's retirement system is projected to decrease. So, um, we, this came kind of as a shock to us, um. Because they finally are factoring in all the tier five and six, um, individuals. And so the rate was holding pretty steady and we saw a pretty significant decline in ERS, um, going into twenty-two, twenty-three. So we factored that into the, the proposal. And so the average expenditures over the period that, uh, we're looking at is, um, basically uh, around four point seven percent with the exception of, uh, twenty three, twenty four, which we'll talk about in just a second. So when we look at our projection here, you start off on the left-hand column is twenty one, twenty twos. This, that was your actual tax levy limit percentage, one point four three percent. You got three percent in foundation aid. You started off with that beginning fund balance of five point nine million and we're projecting you to end this year at about seven point five million. When we look at twenty two, twenty three, now granted, we have the two percent foundation aid in there. So this would be slightly improved from, uh, this scenario. But we're expecting that you will go out at your tax levy limit percentage. And this is really an important expectation because given the fact that you are not going to receive large increases in foundation aid, it's really important for you to stick by that tax levy limit formula. Now I'm going to tell you right now, there are going to be districts that go out at zero. There are some districts in our region that are receiving ten, fifteen, twenty percent additional foundation aid because they have been underfunded by that amount. And so they're receiving millions of dollars of additional foundation aid. And so for the, in those districts, they're going to have a hard time going out with a tax levy increase percentage when they have a lot of additional funds coming in. I can't guess who it's going to be, um, or I can't, you know, I don't know at this point. But I know that the conversations will be happening in those districts that are significantly underfunded about whether or not they can go out with any percentage increase. And then in other districts, there are other variables that are impacting like previous, um, rate hikes in the past years um, that may have those districts go out a little lower than their tax levy limit percentage. Um, and you'll hear me say this again next month, and that is that, um, the formula was created and it was created. So at the times that inflation is low and at one percent, we have been forced to follow a formula at one percent. Where now inflation is high, but that, that allowable growth factor is capped at two percent. And so I really think it's important to capture that revenue because if you don't capture it in next year, it is gone forever. So, um, there, I'm off the soapbox now. Um, so when we look at twenty two, twenty three, we're projecting an operating deficit of about, let's say, six hundred thousand with the foundation aid change. That's not the budget that, that's not the exact budget. When Mark and, and the superintendent, um, accumulate the budget, they're going to factor in retirements. Factor in, you know, actual things where we have just done a projection based on percentage increases um, for the, you know, higher variables in the budget. So, um, but what this does tell me is that you are going to have to look at your budgets and really be prudent about positions and, and that kind of thing so that you can come out with a balanced budget in twenty two, twenty three. Now you can also, uh, you'll have options and I'm sure they'll be discussed at, you know, as the budget process goes along of possibly utilizing reserves or appropriated fund balance to balance the budget. And, um, you know, those are conversations that need to happen because if you don't close that gap in twenty two, twenty three, you can see how it's going to build in those outer years. So in twenty three, twenty four, we again have projected your tax levy percentage. We have a standard two percent foundation aid across the board. And you can see that there is a significant increase in the amount of the deficit, and that's because we're rolling back positions that are currently being funded by the federal stimulus grants back into the general fund budget. And so, you know, at that time, you're going to make that determination of whether or not there are any positions that have been added and maybe those needs have been met and they don't need to continue, or you have additional retirements and that kind of thing. But as you meet each of these budget years, you'll be addressing those, uh, deficits to come out with a balanced budget. Then in twenty four, twenty five and twenty five, twenty six, you see that it just continues to build at about, you know, an eight or nine hundred thousand dollar increase. Because quite honestly, when you project to receive your major sources of revenue as, at around two percent and your average cost of expenditures is around, uh, four point seven percent, you can see how the deficit would, uh, continue to grow. So I am available for any questions that you might have, um, related to that or anything else that financially related. Any questions? Okay, all right. Pass that back to you.
And I can tell you're a pro because you remembered your question slide. I forgot my, my.
Oh, okay.
Thank you very much.
Next week. Sorry, I rushed in without a mask and.
We understand you're in hiding, man. Thank you. And I believe that concludes my report.
Good evening, everyone. Um, from the elementary schools, a couple of highlights I wanted to share with you. We had our fifth grade band and chorus concert last week, which was our first in-person concert in about two and a half years. So it was really exciting. Mr. Alport and Mr. Teller did a fantastic job. We had the kids ready and with two bands and everything shuffling the audience, everything. They did a great job. So shout out to the kids and shout out to them. Drop forms or tell our day. Um, our teachers are continuing doing special development. We've been doing our reading workshop with Catherine Bailey from BT Bosse's. Our three through five teachers participated in this training on January seventh. And our K two are participating next week. So that's, that's great. We're just continuing their, our teachers' learning. First grade used the FOS kits from BT Bosse's instead of a whole science lab to further the students' understanding of light and sound. Those good hands-on learning for our first graders. Our librarian, Melissa Slater, led our K through five students in lessons to honor and celebrate Martin Luther King Jr., just building on their, their, and some of that they already had in library. And then finally, Catherine and I both just want to give a huge thank you to our faculty and staff who over the months and especially the last two weeks have helped us cover CFP and keep us open. Um, if it wasn't for them and the sacrifices that they've had to make throughout the day to help cover different locations and even our district office personnel coming over to help cover positions, um, we would have been able to remain open. So just a huge shout out to our staff who steps up no matter what and comes through, so. Thank you.
I'm doing double duty. I'll do middle school for Drew, so picture me like I have red hair again from my younger days. Um, he's not here, by the way. He's, uh, he's coaching again. Um, so he's actually at Boston. Hopefully bringing home a, a W for us here. Um, so I'm going to combine a couple of these since these are kind of a mixture here anyways. Um, so just wanted to, uh, thank and, and bring light to, uh, the chorus and band concerts and also for the middle school too, the, the drama club production. All of them being a, a huge success over the holiday break or prior to the break. Um, it was awesome to have our live productions back in the auditorium and our students and staff did an amazing job. So, um, kudos to, to them, middle school and high school. Middle school, uh, they raised fifteen hundred dollars at the holiday carnival celebration with all proceeds going to next year's Christmas basket program. Uh, thank you to the staff for purchasing and donating prizes to make this happen. Uh, last week in the middle school, they distributed information to the eighth grade students about Washington DC trip this year. Uh, middle school's looking to run the trip from May eighteenth through twentieth. Uh, they are not using a travel company this year. So, uh, but they are going to be doing all the planning themselves. This will save on the cost of the trip for our students and allow us not to lose any funds if we need to cancel at a later date. Um, between the middle school and high school students, um, they are chosen for a celebrating art competition. Um, fifteen of the middle school students were chosen, have their artwork published in the celebrating art competition. So congratulations to these students and the art department on this accomplishment. At the high school level, part of the same competition with eighteen high school students between Mrs. Doolittle's and Mr. Roscoe's art courses that were chosen for this. It's a national competition. It's held twice a year. Um, so we obviously have some very talented artists in the district. So congratulations to them. Uh, for middle school and high school, quarter two and semester one, it actually ends next Friday, January twenty second, with report cards coming out the following week. And the high school, we're excited to carry on a tradition of having a coffee house. So this is Mr. Motel's Public Affairs college level class. They actually plan and execute. So throughout the entire process, this and the coffee house, it's going to be taking place next Tuesday at six P M. So there's various acts that are being performed as well as, uh, by students and staff, as well as they're doing kind of like a Hoop Donut murder mystery in between the acts that the students are actually going to be performing and putting on. Coffee and tea will be served as well as baked goods from Mrs. Daniel's food classes. So they're actually going to be preparing the food in class supervised, which is awesome. Um, so we're looking forward to being able to have that event. Um, high school wise, again, uh, looking at, uh, towards the future here and an amazing time for our upperclassmen, for our junior prom. It's going to be on May twentieth and it's going to be held at Jenny Gansler. So they did it last year and we thought that Jenny Gansler did a great job and the kids certainly, certainly enjoyed themselves. So, and then lastly, to kind of piggyback for all buildings, um, we just want to say thank you to our staff for their continued flexibility and a lot of times patience, uh, during this time. Uh, we've been close to the tipping point of possibly having to not be in school, actually. So everybody within the district is really pulled together, but just want to say thank you to our staff's middle school and high school to pull it together. Um, Drew made an added note here that, um, some of his medical, middle school staff, because of where they were and being shortened staff, um, that they actually stepped up in their free periods to help with their coverage as well to help make sure that all students were supported and so receiving a solid education throughout this time. So, um, that's it for the middle school and high school.
Thank you. Okay. Two point three board report. Does any member have any emails? All right, uh, just a quick note, um, Tom, Lynn and I attended, uh, president, vice president workshop back in November. And it wa, it was a really good meeting and we learned, um, some best practices and, um, how to conduct open meetings to deal with public comment. Um, so what we were planning to do is hold a workshop for the board in time and we've rescheduled it twice due to sickness. So we're going to aim for holding that workshop immediately after our meeting next month. So hopefully everyone will be healthy and will be there. And that's, that's all I have. Three point one. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to adopt the policies based on the recommendations of the Schenango Forks Policy Committee as attached, fourteen twenty R, complaints about curricula or instructional materials regulation. We have a motion, please.
Motion.
Thank you, Mary.
One second.
Thank you, Christine. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Babra.
Hi.
Christine Webb.
Motion pass. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve four point one through four point five. Have motion, please. Thank you, Mike. I wish to cheer her is good luck going to Florida. Very exciting.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Babra.
Hi.
Christine Webb.
Hi.
Recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve five point one through five point seven. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Mary. Discussion.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Babra.
Hi.
Christine Webb.
Five point eight, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the following probationary appointment. Sue, Susan Neville, date of commencement of service on probation, January third, two thousand twenty two. Date of end of probationary service, subject to education law. January second, two thousand twenty six, certification status, teaching assistant level one. Salary twenty five thousand three hundred and fifty four. And motion, please.
Motion.
Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Babra.
Hi.
Christine Webb.
Hi.
Well, from Susan Neville. Five point nine. Upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the retirement of Sue Erickson, elementary teacher, effective June thirtieth, two thousand twenty two. I don't want her to leave. Can we say we don't want you to leave?
Yeah.
Publicly.
Incredible educator. It's going to be a loss, but I will second the motion.
Yeah, she has been with CF for thirty four years. We are grateful for this service. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Babra.
Hi.
Christine Webb.
Hi.
Motion pass. Best of luck to you. And six point one and six point two are FYI. On recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve six point three through six point six.
Second.
Mary, discussion.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Babra.
Hi.
Christine Webb.
Hi.
Motion, motion approved. Seven point one, upon recommendation of the superintendent, a motion to approve the V O minutes from the regular board meeting of December ninth, two thousand twenty one, and the special board meeting of January thirteenth, two thousand twenty two, as attached. Thank you, Christine. Thank you, Mike. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Babra.
Hi.
Christine Webb.
Hi.
Motion pass. Eight point one. Motion for consideration of executive session to discuss collective negotiations pursuant to Article fourteen of the Civil Service Law and History of Employee. Thank you, Mike.
One second.
Thank you, Christine. Discussion. Roll call.
Amy O'Brien.
Hi.
Mary Collins.
Hi.
Mike Babra.
Hi.
Christine Webb.
Hi.
Motion pass. We will not be taking any actions tonight, so if you want to stay until you do, that's fine. Otherwise, have a good evening.